We're going to call a special meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrink.
Here.
Mayor Murphy.
Here. If you'd all -- we're going to have some presentations. The Councilmember Gross, first four years of service as a council member. Dean, if you'd join me? You guys want to come with us? Stand there, okay. This meeting's a little different today because, besides all our dignitaries, we've got three guys I went to college with who don't believe I'm the mayor, so it's a little different here. Four years ago, I'd never even met a congressman. So I'm happy to say that now, I have one as I call a friend who I can call for advice. Some of you may know that a congressional district includes about 750,000 constituents, which is more than the population of three states, Wyoming, Vermont, and Alaska. So it's always an honor to have our congressman in attendance. Please help me welcome the Honorable Alan Lowenthal.
No, no, I'd rather wait. I'd rather wait. Am I going to do it to you first?
It was both of us.
Okay, right now, yes, I would like to make -- say goodbye to two people. First, I'll go to the mayor for being the mayor, and then I'll go first to Dean. Come on up here, Dean. When I was elected in 2012, I really did not know very much about the infrastructure of Los Alamos. You know, and I have to tell you, the city officials, and especially Dean, have been wonderful mentors to me. It's been a great relationship. I really love this city. You know, we work very closely, especially Dean and I, on the Joint Forces Training Base. He has really, by bringing me along, not so much lecturing, although he's good at lecturing and giving, you know, lecture here and there, has impressed upon me the importance of having such a center here in our community, a center that really provides, if there's ever a natural disaster, if there's a -- these are really where the first responders are going to be. These are our citizen soldiers, and it's a wonderful place. And in doing that, I really became much more involved in the school district and in the city. And your work in bringing us always together, the legislators, Dean, has always had -- has a magnet for doing that. He, you know, he was a -- there was a -- he was -- really did the work for the elected officials, for all of us coming together for our meetings at the base in terms of what was going on, for all the elected officials in the Western Orange counterpart, and also for all the work that you did at the Regional Military Affairs Committee. I just -- in saying goodbye, I'm just going to be saying goodbye, as I was telling Dean, to one part of his, you know, that was as the city council member. But as the advocate for everything in Los Alamos, it's good that I'm going to continue, and I really want to thank you for everything that you've done. Richard. You know, Richard and I both came out, I think, in 2012 in the November election. We were very fortunate, both of us. And I got to know him when I -- as I got to know Dean. But over the last two years as mayor, Richard has some wonderful qualities that this -- you and the city should, I think, everybody appreciates. One of them is, he's so approachable and makes you -- and he makes me feel so good every time I'm in the city and see him, whether we're shopping together here and he runs into me, or here at City Hall, or at some event. And I go to lots of places, and I like to go, and I like to be involved. It makes me feel real good when I go to all those places, when the elected officials, the mayor, really likes to have me there and welcomes me and is warm. And I think you've got a great -- you've had a great mayor who welcomes people to come to Los Alamos. So I really want to thank you for just doing such a great job. And I have many, many things on the -- oh, here they are. Thank you. One to Dean from the House of Representatives. Name what I said.
Services Representative Robin McCray to thank you for -- just please stand and let the crowd recognize you. You did such a great job. From Senator Janet Wynn's office, Field Representative Joe Sturgis.
Thank you, Mayor. The senator does apologize for not being able to come and congratulate and thank both of you for your leadership. But she did want me to come to, first of all, congratulate Dean on his many, many years of leadership as both mayor and serving on our city council. We have a certificate of recognition. Thank you. In honor of your service to the residents and community members of the city of Los Alamos. Dean, I know that you have been very integral in our office, keeping us informed of the important issues going around in Los Alamos, and we look forward very much to continuing to work with you as chairman of the Armac. Congratulations. And of course, while you're not going anywhere, and we're thankful for that, she did want me to come and present you a certificate as well, recognizing you for your leadership as mayor of the city of Los Alamos. Congratulations.
Thank you. From Assemblyman Travis Allen's office, Colin Edwards.
Dean, you're closer. Dean's been an amazing friend to our office, to the assemblyman, and to me personally, and I appreciate his mentorship and his leadership. And I know that if I need something done in Los Al, I can call Dean, and he'll know about it and give me the background and get it done for us. So Dean, I appreciate all your hard work that you've done for us in the past few years. Best wishes for the future. I know it won't be far, and appreciate everything you've done for us. Thanks so much. Thanks. And while Dean's been everywhere at the base, anywhere not on base, I've seen Richard, whether every grand opening in the city for the past couple of years. It's been -- everyone appreciates seeing you and getting a picture of the mayor, or passing out turkeys with our office, or whatever it is, to get things done. So Richard, also, I appreciate our friendship and your mentorship for everything that we need here in Los Alamos, just like Dean. So appreciate everything.
Thank you. The next lady I actually knew before she was -- well, she was an elected official, a statewide elected official, as a matter of fact. But Supervisor Michelle Steele has come home to run the second district. We're very happy to have her. Great watchdog of our money, Supervisor Steele.
Thank you very much, Richard. And thank you Congressman Lowenthal, that you are really showing up for these meetings. It's very impressive, and thank you for coming. This city is a little different. You know, I've been knowing everybody here, and I've been working together with everyone, Warren, Troy Edgar, and Shelley, and everybody here. So thank you very much for, you know, what you are doing, and you try to keep this city straight. And Shelley, congratulations for your new mayorship. And then Josh coming in, and I heard you survived at Spencer's office, so that's really a good thing. I mean, you're going to be a really great city council member. And Dean, I am so happy for you, at the same time we are sad that you are leaving. But, you know, we've been working very closely together, and he let me got on. He's that antique car. He's just amazing to keep up with those antique, and it's just beautiful car. You have a lot of other talent that, you know, you are going through, so thank you very much for your service. Here you go. Just one more thing, that Richard didn't want to receive my certificates, but I know he and I are going to work together at OCTA, so I am very, very excited that we're going to work together, and we're going to make all the transportations getting better in Orange County, so I'm very much excited. After one year that he serves really good, then I'm going to bring my certificate and give it to him. Congratulations to all.
Thank you. We should mention that Supervisor Steele is the incoming chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Congratulations. Now to the best dressed man in the room, from the Joint Forces Training Base, Lieutenant Colonel Nathan Range.
First off, let me tell you, it's an honor to be representing the Joint Forces Training Base and the California National Guard this evening on behalf of Brigadier General John Lathrop, who is the most recent of the commanding generals of the installation. He couldn't be here this evening, but it is a great honor to offer a token of our appreciation to both of these gentlemen. The California National Guard is the largest National Guard force in the nation, and as far as the Army Guard goes, there are three installations in California. The Joint Forces Training Base over there is the only one in Southern California. It's a very busy installation, a very busy base. And I started my job about three years ago, and I quickly realized that Dean Gross knows more about the installation, aspects of the installation, than anyone in uniform there. So he availed himself of us and has always been a very strong supporter and a great partner for the California National Guard and the Joint Forces Training Base. And I can tell you this, he loves this town, he loves Los Alamos, he loves the base, he loves everything about what we do in the military, and it's very gratifying to have that kind of support from someone like Dean. So, Dean, I'll just read the appreciation and recognition and grateful appreciation for your unwavering support to Joint Forces Training Base as a member of the Los Alamos City Council from 2012 to 2016. The strong relationship you have helped build between the community and the California National Guard will endure for years to come. Thank you for your service. Signed by General Lathrop. And while I've known Councilman Gross for a number of years, it's been my privilege only in the past couple of years to get to know Mayor Murphy. And these last two years have been a little bit busy for the relationship between Los Alamos and the base. And so we had to make some hard decisions about the pool and some other things, and it was great to see Mayor Murphy just step into it and, with vigor and energy and with a lot of wisdom, engage us in all of the things that we had to do during that period of time. Sir, we wanted to give you this certificate of appreciation for your tenure as mayor in recognition of your unwavering support to the Joint Forces Training Base and for your continuing service as a member of the city council since 2012, and your two terms as the mayor of the city of Los Alamos in 2015 and 2016. Your outstanding support and the strong community relationship you have built between the city and the California National Guard will endure for years to come. Thank you for your service.
As anyone who works in the city knows, we have a Chamber of Commerce that's second to none, and we're happy to have our CEO, Johnny Stromeyer, here tonight. Please come up.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll start with Dean. Dancing now. First of all, I'm going to thank Dean on behalf of our Chamber of Commerce for what he's done with our chamber. We all know how he's worked with the city. He's worked with our Chamber of Commerce as well. He, for a couple of the years, he chaired our Wings Wheels and Rotors event. And I mean, he really built the car show up to probably second to none in our area. So we've really been grateful and thankful he's sat on our Board of Directors, and we've been thankful for all of his input. And as far as the things that you've done with the chamber, it's very obvious, Dean, how you've always gone above and beyond for what you have done, out representing all of us. And for that, I've always been very appreciative, because I do live in another city, and it's nice to have people here, like tonight I see Gerard and all these other people from various different chambers and different cities, here to respect and acknowledge our new council. So I thank you all for that, and it's just wonderful to see the blend that we have. So on behalf of the chamber, I'd like to give you this in recognition of your years of engagement. It's good. Richard's very familiar with budgets. And so a couple of weeks ago, I ran into Richard. Actually, it was at Winter Wonderland, and he came over and he goes, "You know, two years ago, you gave me a beautiful plaque." And he said, "You didn't know I was going to be mayor again?" So he said, "Why don't we just bring that plaque back and you just replace it?" So that's what we did, and I thank you for that. I don't know if he needed the space on his wall, or if he was really concerned about the monies that we were saving. But whatever it was, I'd like to think that you're, knowing that you were saving us some change. So thank you for your years, and it's a pleasure to go places on behalf of the chamber, representing the Chamber of Commerce in Los Alamos, and to be able to recognize that we have a mayor that's out there, very personable, and everybody appreciates seeing you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have an award for Dean. Dean was elected as a member of the city council, Los Alamos, November 6, 2012. He has served both as a member of the Chamber of Commerce, the Youth Center Board, many years as the Armac. Are you going to continue that, right? And has just been a phenomenal, phenomenal member of the city. If Dean, if there's an event, pretty much safe to say Dean will be there, and I think that's what we're looking for in elected officials. So the city is happy to give you this plaque commemorating your service. And in case there's any room left on your wall, also this tile for commemorating your service also. Now, to not violate any more of the Brown Act during Dean's term than we already have, we're going to have two speakers from the council member, and we'll start off with Troy.
Good evening. I've had the opportunity of serving with Dean since, actually, two separate times, 2006 to 2009, and now 2012 to 16. You know, I always say that to be in a city council, the city council basically is, we are the people that the people want us to work together, no matter what. And when you get on a council, you really quickly try to size up the people that you work with, and you see what does each person bring to the table. And I would just say that what I've always felt that Dean brings to the table is, it's been said over and over again, is his community involvement. Being a veteran myself, and seeing Dean as more military than me is pretty bad. But it, you know, the thing that I learned really fast is that Dean, you know, in the same way that Congressman Lowenthal talked about, you know, it didn't matter who you were in the city, if you went to Dean and you would say, "Hey, Dean, give me an idea of what happened at the base," he would go through that. He was a great historian, somebody that's been very helpful to that whole process. And I'd also say that within the community, I think my first interaction of getting involved with charities and stuff was Dean asking me to come over to the high school to help cook hamburgers. He left out the part that we're doing it all night till the next morning, but, you know, through that process, you would take advantage of those types of opportunities to get to know him better, get to see what he's about, and just to get to really see how much he cares about the community. So Dean is one of your fellow colleagues on the council. I really appreciated the opportunity of working with you. I wish you the best, and again, we just want to thank you for being here with us.
No plaque, but I don't have one either. But I am the other speaker, and, you know, anybody who knows Dean knows he loves his community, he loves his job. His slogan during the campaign was "I care," and I don't think anybody who knew Dean could quibble with that at all. Well, the amazing thing working with Dean is, a lot of people are members of a lot of boards, but they're the vice president who never shows up, not Dean. You have an event, Dean's the first one there, and he's there helping you clean up at the end of the day. Just tireless, and many of us have seen him standing the full day in front of Wings Wheels and Rotors collecting for the troops, many events like that. Just the other day, it was an example of how selfless Dean is. The Sunbirth Youth Academy wanted to honor Dean at their recent graduation for all his service to the base, and Dean refused. He said, "This is about the kids, and I don't want to take the spotlight off them," so now everybody else knows. But just an example of what we had for four years. So the city and all its constituents, thank you for your service. Do I get a few minutes? First of all, I'd like to congratulate the mayor on his reelection. I'd like to congratulate Josh on his election. I'd like to thank all of the folks in the community that did vote for me. It was a good, fun race. You know, I've said many times, every time there's an election, there's term limits. And if you're doing the job that the citizens want, they'll put you back in. If you're not, they won't. In reality, all three of us fared very well in the vote count, and I think that shows. Josh worked harder than the rest of us, and he came out on top, and I congratulate him for that. He and I met on Saturday, and we talked a little bit about how the future's going to be and the things that I can perhaps help him with in the process. I do have a passion for the community. I always have had. I've lived in this community since 1986, and the military and the folks at the base have a special place in my heart. Congressman Lowenthal and I, when he first got elected, we met for breakfast shortly afterwards, and I welcomed him. He's on the other side of the aisle from me, and I had people saying, "Well, why are you reaching across?" And I said, "Because he's our congressman. He represents the citizens of this community, and it's important." And so at our breakfast, I asked him for $25,000, or $25 million. And we've met every year at Christmas, and I still keep asking for the $25 million. He knows what it's for. It's for replacement of the runways over at the base. And he called me a while back and said, "You know, Dean, I get your request, but you need to get somebody to make that ask." And so I got hold of the tag and the adjutant general up in Sacramento, and I said, "Okay, it's time to make the ask." And some money has started to flow, and they're working on the approach ramps over there. And ultimately, we will hopefully have new runways, which are important for the entire community, not just Los Alamos, but everybody in this particular area. I'll continue to do what I can. I get calls from people, I get my phone numbers well-published. I'll continue to take those calls. I'll continue to do what I can without the voice from the DIAS, but I'll continue to do what I can to be supportive. And this is, I've been very blessed. This has just been an absolute great journey. I am involved in a lot of things, and I will probably continue to be involved, so don't be surprised if you see me, because I will continue to do what I can. Thank you all very much. Appreciate the recognition, and particularly from the elected counterparts here that have come tonight, it's very much appreciated, and thank you. And by the way, Merry Christmas. Thank you, Dean. We're going to take a three-minute break to allow the city clerk to take over the meeting. Thank you. Go. Item 4C, declaring and certifying the results of November 8, 2016, general municipal election. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
None. Okay, now the city clerk will take over.
We'll be swearing in our newly elected council members now. Will Councilmember Murphy, please join me at the podium?
I'm back as a council member already. Soon they forget, you know? Yeah, that's right.
Would you like anyone to join you? No? Raise your right hand. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me, saying your own name. I.
I, Richard Murphy.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll have you sign your, if you're oath. And I have your certificate of election.
All right, thank you.
And if you'd like to say a few words.
All right, okay. Some more words. Now I understand what you're talking about when you said "age before beauty" all day. Now it makes sense, you know? Okay. Four years ago, I stood here, told you about my sister's, Patricia's, congratulations that included the request, "Please don't embarrass the family." Set the bar fairly low, and glad to say, I think I met that one. She pointed out that if some city council business or comments go viral on YouTube, it cannot be a good thing. Now I'm back, knowing I really enjoy representing the city. For that, I need to thank all my voters and supporters. I heard repeatedly that my signs were everywhere. For that, I wish, they were, right? For that, I wish to thank Dave, Art, Reed, Mrs. Barbara Neighbors and her daughter Janice, and many others who helped me along the way. I must also thank my fiancee Tina for both permission to run, and much to her surprise, all the walking she did.
all the walking she did with me. This position means that when one person is elected, the whole family serves. It's really true. And Tina provides one other service that you guys don't even know about, keeps me very grounded. At the end of the election, I said to Tina, "Well, I'm not going to be the young, good-looking one anymore," and she said, "You never were." So, the truth hurts a little. This was a very interesting campaign. We had three good candidates, and I'd like to congratulate both Josh and Dean for a clean campaign that stressed the issues and not the personalities. The campaign itself is always an eye-opening, and sometimes good for the ego. As I had a constituent tell Tina, "He's a great man," about five times, and she was like, "Oh, man, I'm never going to hear the end of this," and she hasn't. And there was also a family who told their young kids, when the mayor knocked at the door, that the mayor coming to the door was like meeting the president. Who was I to argue with at that point, you know? I was surprised, both by the number of people who opened their doors, saying, "I know who you are," and equal or larger number that had no idea who I was, and didn't know Los Alamos had a mayor or an election. A little scary. As I begin my second term, I want to challenge both my colleagues and constituents. Los Allo's a great city, but we can do a little better. Citizens, I encourage you to contact the council and give us your ideas, what would make Los Allo a better place to live. To my colleagues, let's do the little things that improve our city. Personally, I think we start by building on the boulevard beautification, and start a tree program that both increases the number of trees and improves the quality of our existing trees. I look forward to working with all of you in the next four years. Thank you.
Please raise your right hand, and repeat after me, saying your own name.
Aye.
Aye, Josh Wilson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties with which I'm about to enter.
The duties with which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Have a election, and if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you. First off, I want to say thank you to Councilmember Gross. You know, you've been a tremendous asset to our community, a tremendous supporter, so thank you very much for your time on the council, and thank you very much for your support. Very much look forward to working with you for a benefit of our community, so thank you. It's interesting, as you looked for this kind of moment, it's hard not to get kind of emotional, and to say words that, you know, humble, and gratitude, and thanks, but it's something I really do truly want to express. First off, to the voters, everybody who came and supported me, you know, we went out there, we knocked on doors, we tried as many people as we can, and I was always just impressed with somebody who actually wanted to ask a question and say, "Yeah, I know who you are, and I have this issue on there." I'm like, "Great, I studied so hard, I can finally go and actually talk that." Those people said, "Okay, thank you very much," and, you know, you never heard from them again, but it turned out that we reached a lot of people, and for that, I truly am thankful. I also want to thank supporters rooms, people who volunteered, my friends that are here, and my family. So, I'm looking around for my mom on here too, but there she is. So, she helped me out, she walked the precincts with me too. I think she's more curious about anything, to make sure I didn't get yelled at, but she was out there, and thank you so much. You know, a couple about my mom, and the people who raised me, before she met my father, she was a single mother on welfare, and when she got a job, she wanted to go to the welfare office and get the check back to say, "You know, I did this, I don't need this anymore, I got on my own." So, to my mom, I have got tremendous strength. For my grandmother who's here, she immigrated from Nicaragua, and she came not knowing English, but it worked her way up, joined the Department of Navy, and became an engineer technician with one of the top secret clearances to help guard our nation. And she has been a tremendous asset, a tremendous person to me to say, "Thank you so much for everything you've done." Sorry, to my father who's not here, you know, he joined the Air Force at age 17 to go fight in Vietnam. When he came back, he got in the automotive field, worked hard, did two jobs when I was a young kid, selling cars at night and fixing them up during the day, and eventually worked himself up. You know, he passed away a couple years ago, but he taught me something that was very personal, very emotional for Tina, and it's something I reflect on last. He goes, "Son, luck is nothing more than hard work and opportunity." I thought about the luck, you're lucky to be here, you're lucky to have this, or you're lucky to get elected, but to me, it's the family I have has taught me that hard work gets you to where you want to have. And when you have an opportunity to do something great, you make the most of that opportunity, and you work hard to do it. So, I am truly humbled for the opportunity that the voters have given me, and I will work hard to do right by you, for those who elected me, and for the constituents we have. So, thank you for giving me that opportunity, and I will make the most of it, so that we all have some good luck for our city. So, thank you very much.
There'll be now be a short reception in the council lobby. There's a cake, and a few other goodies up here. Please come join. Thank you. Cake. Order and put Josh to work. It says here, "Brief presentations to Mayor Murphy from the City Council." Is that you?
That's me.
Brief was the operator.
Brief?
Brief.
It's only 10 minutes or so.
10 minutes.
So, I get the honor of honoring Richard as our mayor for the past two years, and as a mentor and a friend, and he taught me a lot of stuff. You know, he presents himself as pretty unassuming, but this guy's a pretty bright guy, and probably has one of the best business brains I've ever seen, so when he comes off pretty humble and unassuming, trust me, he's a shark when it comes to the business. He's quite a powerful man, you know, so powerful, in fact, he was able to move Taco Tuesday to Mondays on our council meetings. So, we had tacos every Monday, and unless it was pizza Monday for Casa U Shelter, and then he got to pick all the toppings. So, you know, he taught me a lot of things. He taught me that you can, to always look for middle ground when you have two passionate opposing views. Not everybody's going to be happy, but at least they'll respect you for at least trying to come to a mutual consensus. He taught me to think long-term, not for next year, not in five years, but in 50 years, what decisions that we make here are going to affect our city and our council in the next 50 years. And he always put that in our heads about, you know, what are we doing here that's going to affect us? So, I'd like to give Richard a couple of things. This is a repeat from last year, but the traditional gavel.
Thank you.
And then also, as just a small token, for your leadership, and your mentorship, and your friendship.
Thank you. Okay. Is it a gag gift? That is a gag gift. Okay. This guy loves tacos, it says. Very appropriate. And meatballs, Rob, we're several. It's not too good for you. Okay, well, now that it's just us, you know, and all the big shots have left, I can tell you, I did it all myself, okay? It was all me, and these guys, I did it really in spite of them, you know? If that's what, no, you all know the truth, you know, we have a great group here. We've had a kind of revolution in the city, starting with Warren as mayor, and people started getting along, and now it's a very collegial group, and we wouldn't be, if we didn't make a joke about Brett being here for three years, it wouldn't be a meeting, so we're very proud of that, you know? All these groups, the finance people, the city clerk, the city, they all have groups that talk. And for many years, Los Allo was not a place you wanted to work, because you weren't going to be there very long. As Chief Mattern would tell us, when he left, in 12 years as chief, he had 12 city managers. So, Brett being here three years, we all consider it really an accomplishment, and I congratulate all of you. The chamber, Johnny, and our number-one businesswoman in town, Judy, thank you for all your support and all the work you did. And to the staff, you guys are the greatest, you know? Just a quick example of what we have in this city, before the Winter Wonderland, I found Stephen making trash cans. He has, wears several very important hats, but was pitching in to make sure that the trash was in the right spots at the Winter Wonderland. And Cory was also running around the same thing, going in a million different directions, and that's the kind of special group we have that makes us a fun place to work. So, thank you all for your support for these years. Thank you. Do you take this? Okay.
We'll be moving on to item 4G, which is the city council reorganization. At this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for the office of mayor. After nominations, I'll close the nominations, and a roll call vote will be taken in the order received. Are there any nominations for the office of mayor?
I'll nominate Shelley.
Are there any further nominations? There be no further nominations, nominations are now closed. Please vote for Shelley Hasselbrink for the office of mayor. Roll call vote, Councilmember Edgar.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carried. Congratulations, Mayor Hasselbrink. Can I turn the meeting over to you for the nomination of Mayor Protem?
At this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for the office of Mayor Protem. After nominations, I will close, after nominations, I will close the nominations, and then ask the clerk for a roll call vote in the order of nominations received. Are there any nominations for the office of Mayor Protem?
I nominate Troy Edgar.
Are there any further nominations? There be no further nominations, nominations are closed. Please vote for Troy Edgar for the office of Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Edgar.
Aye.
Mayor Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
This doesn't mean you have to take the position, okay?
Yeah, we've been here before.
You gonna take the other seat?
At this time, you guys can say a few remarks, otherwise we'll recess and start the regular meeting. I'm sorry, adjourn, and then start the regular meeting.
Would you like a word?
No, I think we've got a lot of words left here.
You're good, too. Okay, they're off to a good start, short speeches, so. We will now adjourn the special meeting, and...
Shelley.
My turn.
No, 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 I'm moving this over to you. I'm moving, believe me, believe me.
What are you doing?
Oh, you're, I thought it came at 6 o'clock, sorry.
To repeat Richard's words, we will now adjourn this meeting, and move into our regular scheduled meeting.
Short recess?
A short recess to change seats. The city council regular meeting for Monday, December 12. Roll call, please.
And Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Edgar.
Here.
Mayor Hasselbrink.
Here.
Can you please stand with me as we do the pledge of allegiance, and then remain standing as Mayor Protem Edgar does the invocation. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There, please remain standing, bow your head, please. Dear Lord, thank you so much for the great evening tonight. Lord, we just pray that you place your hands on our city and continue to keep us safe. We pray that you're with our firemen, our policemen, and over at the base, all the people that are fighting for us. Lord, we just are grateful, we ask for your wisdom, we want to thank you for allowing us to have Josh joining our council, and we appreciated Dean's service. Lord, thank you, and we just pray that you're with Shelley for this next year ahead, and we're looking forward to a great year. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Jen, join me down for presentations.
So, Kelly lives over in a apartment row, and a few weeks ago, she, you know, we stress everybody to see something, say something, and we see a lot, and we relatively, we don't say a lot. She saw a couple of people loitering in the alley, looking at car windows, and just didn't feel right about it, and trusted her gut, and she called the police department, and they came out, questioned the individuals, and they recognized one of them from a robbery over at Michi Pizza that happened a few weeks ago. That was pretty much a cold case, they didn't have too many leads on what was going on, and by Kelly taking an action, it led to the arrest for the previous crime over at Michi Pizza. So, I just wanted to recognize her as just one of our local residents that just saw something and didn't feel right about it, and took a simple action as a phone call on it. So, just thank you very much, and we just wanted to give you a certificate of recognition. Thank you, and she promised me that I wouldn't make her speak, so. And then we're going to recognize one of our outgoing commissioners. Can I have Michael Bell come on up? Come on, Michael.
So, Michael was on our Park and Rec Commission, and he had a true passion and saw a need in our community for an art festival. And so, he led the command to do our Weekend of Art, and he had this thing passed within about two months, which is unheard of in government business, but he was able to get this done, and the support of staff and council, and we put that on the end of April, this last year at the community center, and it was just very well-received, and this year it's going to be growing. We're going to be having a performing arts part of it, and Michael is leaving us on the commission, but he has promised to come back as the curator for the Weekend of Art. So, we just wanted to thank him for his service, thank you for your vision and your passion, and because of that, we have a new tradition in our city. Thank you.
So, now we're going to introduce our new commissioners in a number of our boards, so I'm just going to bring them up, and we'll do a quick photo, and just so the community can know who our new commissioners are, you know, these are the guys that do the long meetings behind the scenes, as far as getting the plans going, so when it comes to us, it comes to us all packaged and nice, and we're able to throw our support around it. So, it's 34 individuals that volunteer their time on five different commissions, and they really do a number of the heavy lifting that we just don't have the expertise or the time to do. So, I really want to thank them all in advance for their service, and just for their commitment to our community. So, Mark Chirco for Parks and Rec. Tanya Dobie for Parks and Rec. We have Stephen Olveda for Park and Rec. And we have Tim Johnson for Personal Appeals Commission. We have Randy Hill for Traffic Commission.
Thanks for serving.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Sally Rodman for Traffic Commission. And then our last one who is not here, Elliot Singer, he's just moving from our Cable Commission to our Traffic Commission. So he's already a servant of ours anyway. So thank you all so much for your future service and for your commitment to help us. Come on over.
You have to move, you have to move forward.
to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. Seeing none, we'll close oral communications and warrants, roll call vote.
I'll make a motion to move the warrants.
Second.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar.
Aye.
Mayor Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Consent calendar, all consent calendar items may be active on by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Does anybody want to pull something?
Need to pull item D, please.
I'm sorry, was that B?
D, Delta.
D, and I'd like to pull item A, please.
I'll pull item G.
Okay, so.
I'll move the balance.
Second.
One note, I'm going to recuse myself from, I'm sorry, pull item A, correct?
That's the one I pulled, yeah. So we have a motion and second?
Yes.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, just real quick for item A, I did pull that because I was not at the last meeting, so I would have to recuse myself from that vote and also Councilmember Wilson. So I just wanted to vote on that separately.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead.
No, I'll make a motion to move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then two abstentions. And Troy Deet.
Yeah, item D. I don't really need a staff report considering tonight, but I've had discussions with staff behind the scenes and I'll just be voting no on that item.
Okay, do I have a motion for any discussion for, any other discussion for item D? Do I have a motion?
I'll move D.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Josh, item E.
Sorry, it's G.
I'm sorry, G, thank you.
Yeah, can we get a staff report on this time, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and City Council. We have, and before you, item G, insurance settlement, reappropriation of funds. And this is to basically accept an insurance settlement from Mercury Insurance and reappropriate insurance proceeds for ballistic doors for four police patrol vehicles. And Captain Connolly, give a report in terms of the information in the staff report. Actually, actually, let me switch back over. Jason Alomam is the Administrative Service Director, he'll give the staff report.
Good evening, Council. As Brett mentioned, it's a two-pronged recommendation. First, recommendation to accept the settlement from Mercury. There was a traffic collision back in August that took place. A city vehicle was involved in that. The incident resulted in significant damage to the vehicle, which was the fault of the other driver who had insurance with Mercury. And so Mercury has offered $13,143.75 to retain the car and an additional $4,300 for the transfer of the lighting equipment and other police equipment. This vehicle was scheduled to be replaced in the current year. If you remember, we have seven police vehicles to be replaced in the current year's budget. And this was one of those vehicles that was already scheduled to be replaced. And therefore, it's recommended that we accept the settlement offer from Mercury and that we reappropriate those funds for the purchase of ballistic doors for four police patrol vehicles. During the year, like I said, we already have planned and budgeted for seven police vehicles to be purchased in the current year. And the police department has identified the need to have the police patrol, black and whites, retrofitted with ballistic doors for safety purposes. And as outlined in the staff report, there are various reasons why ballistic doors add additional protection to, not just to patrol officers themselves, but in certain circumstances to the citizens as well. And so therefore, it's recommended that we accept the settlement from Mercury and reappropriate those proceeds to be used to purchase ballistic doors for four patrol vehicles. With that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thanks. So I just wanted to make the quick point for this one is I was kind of surprised that we're only, first off, our vehicles don't have ballistic doors currently now and if we're only going to do this, we're only going to do this for four. With the low cost of each door, seems that we would probably make the stance that for all the first responder vehicles that we do have, if they are in an active shooter situation where we do need to have additional security, that we should at least make the investment to have those ballistic doors on all first responder vehicles. I know officers do have a lot to consider and I don't want them to consider whether they have a vehicle or not, they may have ballistic doors on it if they have that. I was given information as early as this meeting, after meeting with staff regarding this issue, and they said that it's the vehicles that are being replaced and then the new ones will cycle in and that the additional cost, Mr. Alomam, you were saying is that retrofitting an existing vehicle is a lot tougher rather than ordering a brand new.
Exactly. We have 13 vehicles in the police department, seven black and white patrol cars, one of which actually is one of the Watch Commander's vehicle. And then on top of that, those seven, we have three detective vehicles and three admin vehicles. So four that are being purchased new can be installed with ballistic doors as part of the purchase from the dealer. And there is a cost effectiveness associated with that purchase, which equates to roughly $4,000 per vehicle. For the remaining fleet, to have those vehicles retrofitted, it would be more costly. What we would like to do is to look into that and obtain quotes from those vendors that can retrofit those vehicles. And we'd like to bring that back to the council for consideration at a subsequent meeting.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Do I have a motion for item G?
Yeah, just another quick question. So we have 13 police vehicles and we start going into the mode of adding 4,000 to each. So we, that fund is very underfunded right now for being able to do that. And I would just ask Chief, as you guys go through, you know, we want to try and balance, you know, are we going to be able to get that fund completely funded in the future to get the future police cars? And I just, I know that this is a great opportunity, but I'm kind of worried about the longer term budget implication.
Yes, sir. That's why we're just using the money that came as a result of the settlement to start this, you know, project. And then actually do the research necessary to find out how it is that we can, you know, fund the remaining vehicles and which ones we actually need to do that with.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anybody else?
I'll move item G.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion times. So this is the City Council, the appointments and reappointments to the outside agencies. And we can go over from last year, I'll just go down the list. The Joint Powers Insurance Authority, we're no longer a part of, so there won't be a delegate on that. Orange County Fire Authority, I'm currently the delegate for that. If there's no opposition, I'd like to keep that position. I'm on the Budget and Finance Committee for that as well. So if there's no objection to that. The Orange County Sanitation District, currently, Richard is the delegate and I am the alternate. I can give up that alternate position to somebody else for some experience. And Richard, I wasn't sure if you were interested in continuing on with that position?
Sure.
And is anybody interested in the alternate position?
Well, I would like to know what's the frequency of the alternate needing to step in? I might be interested in if, with, you know, Shelley, if that's okay with you?
Yeah.
How often would you see Richard?
I've never missed.
Okay. Perfect.
But the alternate, I think it's once a year, they have a strategy meeting, right? Where the alternate comes in there?
And they also have an orientation meeting for you.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to be considered for that.
Any other interest? Warren, you're it. Vector Control, Warren's in the middle of a two-year term right now, so that'll stay as that. League of California Cities State Division, it's historically the mayor and the mayor pro tem. So move that. And the City Selection Committee, also the mayor and mayor pro tem. The Orange County Library Advisory Board, I'm currently the delegate for that and Richard is the alternate. I would be willing to give that up. It meets once a quarter at four o'clock in Tustin with all the other Orange County libraries. Councilmember Wilson, that's historically the new position, it gets you some good networking with the other cities.
Sounds great.
Okay. Any other objection on that?
No.
Okay. And then as far as the alternate?
I'm good, I like that and I'll stay on there.
Okay. And then we have Westcom, the GPA Board. We have an opening for the delegate and then currently, Richard is the alternate. Do I have any interest for the delegate?
All of us.
You want to do that?
Yeah.
And then the OCTA I-405 Policy Working Group, that hasn't met for about a year. I'm currently the delegate of that. I would just assume, just disband that and do it on an as needed basis. It looks like they're already in the design build phase for the 405 project anyway, so I'm not sure if our input's going to be too valid at this point, so. And the Budget Standing Committee, currently, that is Troy and Richard. That's an internal. Are you guys interested in staying on that?
I think longer term, you know, I'm going to be termed out here in two years forever. So I would think, Josh, at some point, it might be good for you if, you know, I don't know, Rich, if what your thought is, but, you know, it's been very helpful to keep a consistency in the finances. But, I mean, I'm definitely willing to do it again, but if, Josh, if that was something you were interested in and serving with Rich, I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, I would be. So at some point, I obviously defer mayor pro tem on his choice, but I would be interested in that.
And Richard, your thoughts on it?
You mean me staying?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, unless somebody else wants to do it. I've done it three years.
You're good at it.
Yeah, Brett keeps bailing us out. No, Jason does.
That's right. I tried, you got that right, I'm sorry.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar is correct.
Yeah. Okay, so are there any objections to having Councilmember Wilson and Councilmember Murphy?
No. Choice.
Okay. And then the Civic Center relocation, both of those subcommittees have dissolved as of this last year. And then the School of Working Group, are we doing that on an as needed basis?
Ad hoc. Yeah, it'll be ad hoc as we form one as we need it, so.
Okay. So that is it on the outside agencies? You're good with that, Wendy?
Yes, I just need a motion and a second to carry it as Mayor Hasselbrink read.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now the fun stuff. Mayor and council initiated business. I'll start with Warren.
Well, not much happened for me, just Vector Control. I guess the meeting will be coming up this Thursday, I'll be attending that and not much else, but happy holidays to all and thank you, Dean, for, you know, for me, personally, the pleasure to get to know you and really work with you as, you know, your heart for the city, what you do, what you've done, certainly a resource. I know I'm a better person because I get to know you and I'll count on that. But happy holidays to all and a happy new year.
Richard.
Congratulations to Cory on the Winter Wonderland. It was, thing gets better every year. I don't know how you keep it going, but it really, the move I thought was well received. Was there any negative? You hear any negatives? No? And I'd also like to echo Warren regarding Dean for his service. We got elected together, great to serve with you for four years. And Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
I want to say the rest of the council, I'm very much looking forward to working with you. Thank you very much for providing a good, stable city so far. So I mean, we're, I'm very excited to, looking forward to what we can accomplish together. Also, the Parks Department, thank you very much for the Winter Wonderland. You know, it's kind of a special place in my heart when we first started that over five years ago and I can only imagine, we had about five or 6,000 people there this year. You know, Cory jokes with me that my job afterwards is usually pushed around the poor potties from the street and he spared me that this year. So thank you very much, I got to take down the stage at the end of the night. I went on a ride along last night with our La Salle Finas and got to see a different view of the city for that, so thank you very much, the PD. And also met with recently with the department heads to kind of get a feel for it and really ask kind of what their priorities are. You know, I look at this as a collaborative effort with the city staff, with the council. You know, we're all in this together, we all want the best for our communities, so it's great to hear their ideas and their thoughts and hopefully we can accomplish these great things next four years. And kind of our last piece was, on the last meeting, I think I had a challenge issued to me for race on the base. So I needed to get, start getting into shape because my mouth time is not going to be competing on that one. So we'll see who the fastest council member is at that point.
Sure, nice having a good, fresh, young guy on the council.
The council's better positioned compared to the other commissions.
Yeah.
So that's it, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar.
Yeah, a couple things. I also want to wish everybody in the community just a very Merry Christmas. I also wanted to acknowledge Diana Hill from our school district here. She didn't get much fanfare, but they are doing such an awesome job at the school district. I'd just like to give you a round of applause. I would also echo Cory and the entire city staff on what we were able to accomplish for the Winter Wonderland. You know, when Josh was starting to rise through the ranks of Chamber and Commissions and stuff, one of the things that he started was this young professionals group in the Chamber. And it got a lot of people interested and really tried to change the demographics of the Chamber involvement. You know, sitting on the periphery, not really super active in the Chamber because the type of work I do is outside of here, but definitely realized how important the Chamber is for our community and how to tie in all the businesses. Josh found a niche, which was, we need to get, you know, we have all of these very seasoned city people that are very involved that own businesses, but we needed to kind of get the newer folks, the younger folks involved that own businesses to get them excited to find out what the benefit is of being a part of the Chamber and then eventually a part of the city. So I, Josh, I just want to recognize for all the effort that you put into that, one of the big things that came out of that was the Winter Wonderland. And I'm also, I serve on St. Isador, I was over with St. Isador Historical Society, so the oldest building in La Salle, the old church. When Josh and the Chamber started that event, we were right in the middle of negotiating with the Orange County Diocese to try and get that building back to our city and get it back into a nonprofit. And so when that event came out, not only were we able to do a great event, but we were also able to get a ton of people in this community focused on St. Isador. And through that, we were able to negotiate with the Orange County Diocese and we, as a nonprofit, had bought that church. And so, Josh, thank you, because that was a pivot point. Right when that happened is when we were able to secure the funding. And remember the diocese and the bishop coming, Bishop Van had come through a couple times and he looked over at like the event going on there and he's like, wow, this place really is the center of the community. And now if you go there, it really, really is. So kudos to everybody involved. A couple things, just business, again, I say at almost every meeting, Rivers Mountains Conservancy, but this month, you know, city looks like it's shutting down with Brett thinking it's almost Christmas time, but the reality is, we're getting ready to put out, forbid, the new bike trail on the riverbed. I've been waiting for a long time, everybody up here has. The Coyote Creek Park right behind McAuliffe is about ready to get a new bike trail up to the Seal Beach part of it where anybody that goes out there, runs, rides their bikes, it's really a well-used area and it seems like it's it's really a well-used area, and it seems like it's tucked aside. I'd say anybody, while you're off over holiday break, park at Oak and walk behind the school. It's been done up really well. And again, it's going to be really nice getting that new bike trail. Lastly, coming up, as we go into the holiday, Costa Youth Shelter and Americana. So for Costa, a big fundraiser that's happening coming up in the first quarter, and more out there on the webpage here, so if you're interested. But they have a Night on the Town, a lot of, a big event to be able to help really take care of the youth in our community, and not only in our community, but the surrounding community. We've served over 11,000 people. I would say if anybody's interested to get a tour of Costa during the holiday, there's a lot of kids over there that don't have a good family structure, and I would just ask that, get in contact with the city staff or over Robinson Claire at Costa, and just remember that a lot of people that aren't as fortunate as we are over there definitely could use your support. Lastly, Costa, I'm sorry, Americana. We announced last month, since we got a lot more people here this time, I want to talk about Kenny Brandyberry. So Kenny Brandyberry was nominated to be the Citizen of the Year for Los Alamos and Rossmore area. The Americana Awards is really put on by Cypress College. And many of us, including myself, have had kids cycle through Cypress College. And I'd say that they are also, they raise money for kids that can't afford that, and they recognize in a fundraiser, somebody, and they've recognized Kenny Brandyberry. So we've bought a couple tables, we want to make sure we get those filled with Los Alamos, Rossmore, and anybody that's been affected by Kenny and the Costa families. So I would just ask if anybody's interested in attending the event to recognize Kenny, we would say get ahold of Brett Plumley, and he'll give you the information. With that, again, I want to wish you a Merry Christmas. I hope you all have a good holiday. Thank you.
I attended the Chamber breakfast at Old Ranch. I'd like to thank Judy Cablo and Green Street Interiors for sponsoring it once again, so we were able to have a real nice served breakfast at Old Ranch. And we had our Los Alamos Choir carolers there providing the entertainment, and as usual, they were phenomenal, so that was very nice. Winter Wonderland was amazing again. I believe, Cory, there were 4,000 people there, or am I underestimating that number?
We're estimating around 5,500 or 6,000.
So a little, little tiny event that we've got here, a couple years old, great tradition. The kids were having a blast in the snow. Everybody was, we want to make this bigger and better, and we're already talking, how can we make it bigger and better? And it's just, it's a great event. We all attended the Sunburst Youth Academy, Class 18 graduation on Saturday. They graduated 197 at-risk kids that voluntarily have made a choice to come into this 22-week residential program and reset their lives and start again. A lot of high school graduates, a lot of them going on to college. It was very inspirational. This was the first class under the new director, Lieutenant Denise Varner, and she's just got a passion for this program, and we're just going to watch it grow and get better if it can possibly be. And I would finally like to thank Dean for his service in, on the diocese here and also in the community. I know he's going to stay actively involved in our community. And I'd like to welcome Josh to our council. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city attorney, the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. And want to, I have quite a few thanks here, but I want to thank Councilmember Murphy, I'm going to have to get used to saying council member again, for his two years as mayor and first two-time mayor in 27 years, Wendy? 27 years, so thank you. I've appreciated working with you, and I think a good part of the leadership of this council and is also due to your being a mayor for two years and the continuity of staff and city with this council is heading in a very good direction. And thanks, Dean, to your four years of service on the city council. Appreciate it working with you. Congratulations, Mayor Hasselbrink, and Mayor Pro Tem Edgar, that's outstanding, and Councilmember Josh Wilson. Appreciate you getting on board and look forward to working with you. And thanks to all of staff for just a great, outstanding year and all the work that you do. I want to recognize Tony Brandyberry, and congratulate him officially. He is moving along to another city, so want to thank him for his years of service with the city of Los Alamos. And fantastic Winter Wonderland, as was mentioned, Cory and your staff, and 5,500 participants is just a great, outstanding event. And that's everything. Happy holidays to everyone. Appreciate it.
All right. And with that, let's wish everybody.
I wanted to say also that this is now a much shorter meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
Mayor Hasselbrink.
Better management.
And with that, at 6:47, meeting adjourned.